Top session. We are going to get our meeting started. I'm going to ask for the clerk to call the roll, please.
Commissioner Bernard. Commissioner Kerner.
Here.
Commissioner Moreno.
Here.
Commissioner McKinley.
Here.
Commissioner Sacks.
Here.
Mayor Weinroth.
I am here.
Vice Mayor Weiss.
Here.
Thank you very much. And Commissioner Kerner is going to do the invocation and lead us in the pledge. Everybody, please rise.
Thank you, Mayor. Dear God, as we gather here today, we pray that we are ever mindful of the opportunities to render our service to fellow citizens and to our community, keeping in mind always the enduring values of life, exerting our efforts in those areas and on those things upon which future generations can build with confidence. Let us continue to strive to make a better world. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Kerner. All right, we have a couple of items of regular business to do before we get on with our agenda of workshop. So we have item 3A, 1 and 2, the clerk and controller. Oh, I guess I need to approve the agenda. I'm trying to get through this so quickly. You know, I have lunch today. I want to be out of here.
We will be.
Okay, very good. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda? I have a motion by Commissioner Moreno. All right, are you going to make any changes? No, you can't make changes. I'm sorry. All right. Fine.
I do have some deletions and modifications. On page, the first page, our 10:30 a.m. item has been deleted for further staff review. That was the Impact Fee Housing Assistance Program. We did reach out to our partners to tell them that we would be moving that item. And then we're moving our 2 o'clock up to, what was 2 o'clock, up to the 10:30 a.m. slot. So you will wrap up by noon today.
So we can't have lunch?
Yes. And we also have a revised motion just changing the actual year on 3B1, which is a regular item.
Very good. Thank you. And I'm going to look for that motion again from Commissioner Moreno. And I have a second by the vice mayor. All in favor, all opposed, show that the agenda has now been approved, 7 to 0. All right. Now we're going to go to the agenda. We have item 3A, 1 and 2, which is from the clerk and controller, going to have a motion to approve. The vice mayor has made a motion. I have a second by Commissioner Sacks, all in favor, all opposed. That's been approved, 7 to 0. The county attorney is recommending a motion on a settlement. Do I have a motion to approve? I have a motion by Commissioner Moreno. I have a second by the vice mayor, seeing no further discussion. All in favor, all opposed, show that's being approved, 7 to 0. And of course, showing Commissioner Bernard has joined us. Okay, it's now time to get on with our workshop. And as the county administrator said, we are doing some changes, but our first item of business this morning is Go Glades, my favorite subject. And Mr. Bonlaren, come on up and tell us all the great things that are going on.
Waste of paper.
Mr. Forbes, it's always great to see you.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Administrator Baker. Before you this morning, we have a presentation on our Go Glades pilot project. Some of you heard this a couple of times, and we've gotten some direction from the board, and we're going to be seeking some additional direction from you today. But before we begin, I just wanted to introduce our team who's going to be presenting to you. Clinton Forbes, our executive director of Palm Tran, is with us. Eric Hines with WSP, one of our consultants, who's going to talk a little bit about the benefits analysis that we provided for this. And Masimba Mutombo from the county attorney's office, who's with us on any of the legal issues, and we thank all of them for their work so far. Our agenda for today is a five-part agenda. We want to first talk about the Go Glades Pilot Service Evolution and how we've come to where we are today from September 2018. We'll talk a little bit about the service description and the performance, specifically some of the new technology, the ridership and productivity that we built into the service. We'll get into the peer agency review by WSP and Eric. We'll talk about the different options that we explored, the outsourcing versus in-house, and then some of the labor and contractual implications that have come about from that. We'll move on to the service model, cost comparisons, some of the different assumptions that we've taken into consideration, as well as the vehicle operating costs analysis. And then finally, we have some board direction that we worked closely with the ATU and their leadership to bring before you today. So the Go Glades Pilot Service Evolution started in September of 2018. Some of you might recall the route performance maximization. That's where we looked at our entire system in Palm Tran and looked at some of the inefficiencies and created some efficiencies out of that. We merged some routes in the Glades area, specifically 47 and 48, and that created an opportunity to look at some other different types of specific service in that region. In December of 2018, DOT funded the Glades Express. That ended. And then our Go Glades began as what we called a flex route, which was sort of a fixed route that allows us to flex off of that route into specific pickup locations at people's homes or businesses, and then back onto that fixed route again. In July of 2019, we came to the Board of County Commissioners. We reviewed the service performance, and the board directed us to extend Go Glades for one additional year. Then you see that dotted line. COVID-19 came to town. And in April of 2020, Go Glades extended what was a dial-a-ride service to the entire region, where you would dial in for that. And then in June of 2021, the BCC requested Palm Tran to evaluate in detail the estimated benefit cost for insourcing versus outsourcing of this, and also the board approved the fares for the service. In February of 2022, we went to what was called a mobility-on-demand service for this, and that was where we integrated the new VIA technology that we'll talk a little bit more in the presentation today. And then in June of '22, the contract was extended until December 31st of 2022. Clinton?
Thanks, Todd. Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Board. This slide really depicts the service, all the service that we provide in Palm Beach County. On the eastern part of the county, you know, it's most of our fixed route. We have 31 fixed route service. And then on the western part of the county, we have, you know, three routes, three fixed routes, 40, 47, and 52. Of course, we have the new Go Glade service, and we also have paratransit. I think what I want to point out here is the FTA, the Federal Transit Administration, recognizes Palm Tran is having three modes now. We have the fixed route service, paratransit, and now mobility-on-demand. Before mobility-on-demand, we had two modes, which was just fixed route and paratransit. And continuing just with the service description, you know, this on-demand service provides access to opportunity. Seven days a week for the folks living in the western community, 5 a.m. to 9 p.m., $2 per trip, one way. You can book the trip on the web, by phone, or on the app. And Paradise Pass holders, we recognize those passes, and they travel at no additional cost using this service. And of course, our eligible, our paratransit riders are eligible to ride this service fare-free. Again, continuing with the service description, the service area is 110 square miles, about 41,000 in population, and we use about six to eight vehicles in peak to provide the service. What was a game changer, as Todd mentioned earlier, for this service was the introduction of ride-hailing software, very similar to Uber and Lyft. And that's provided, you know, through VIA. And in fact, this software was funded by the Florida Department of Transportation, who have been great funding partners for this service, and laid out, you will see later in the presentation, you know, the support that the state has given Palm Tran from operations to the capital outlay. But we implemented this software in February, and it has been a big hit with the customers. And we'll show you a little more on the software. This is a promotional brochure we put out to the community. It's very easy to use. Create your account, book a ride, meet your driver. And here is just a kind of illustration, kind of real-time of juxtaposing Go Glades and Lyft's app, and it operates with the same type of cadence, really very similar experience. You put your destination in, it gives you options, and you select the option and take the ride.
And we have a video, we have a video demo, just so you can see real quickly. Christian, if you don't mind playing that again, just so the BCC can just see the analogous to the Uber and Lyft technology that we have there.
And for our viewing public, the folks in the audience, and you as well, we have QR codes up here. If you'd like to point your cameras to that QR code, you can download the app. Or you can go, if you have an iPhone, go to the App Store and download the app, or go to Google Play if you're unfortunate to have an Android. So that's the technology. And again, the technology has taken off. It's been a really hit. It's taken the service to another level. This is a very busy slide. We won't spend a lot of time. Just to say that green is good. And so from the outset of this service, we set performance metrics, and, you know, this service really has exceeded and met all of our service metrics that we established at the outset of the project, from safety to mobility to customer satisfaction. And continuing with service performance, here are some, just a data snapshot. From the customer satisfaction standpoint, you could see, you know, 4.9 out of 5 in terms of customer satisfaction. The average ride duration is about 17 minutes. You've spent about 17 minutes on a trip. 2,600 app installs since March. So that continues to increase on a daily basis, and approaching 9,000 boardings in a month. And we'll show you how significant that is when you compare where we started from. We've met our goal, our productivity goal of four passengers per hour. And agent booking, so you can still dial in and book a ride. If you don't have the technology, you can still call us. Now, that says 80%, but that was 100% before we introduced the app. So 80% is, you know, pretty significant. And here is a snapshot of the ridership from when we started the service to now, August 2022. And as you can see, with the exception of COVID, where there was a precipitous dip in ridership in March 2020, there's just been tremendous ridership gains with this service. In fact, if you look from June 2022 to August 2022, we broke every ridership record every month. So we had a new ridership record, you know, every month since June. And right now, we're at 8,883, and we expect to eclipse that this month. And just last, you know, we've gotten a lot of recognition nationwide, a lot of accolades related to introduction of this service. Passenger transport is a premier periodical in our industry that's written by the American Public Transportation Association, and they featured our service in this periodical. And so that's just a little on our performance and where we are with technology with the service. And at this time, we'll introduce Eric Hines to share with you the information and the analysis on the outsourcing versus insourcing.
Thank you. So before I get started, just a little bit on my background, obviously, my name is Eric Hines, a senior transit planner with WSP with over 20 years of transit operations and forecasting experience. So we've been contracted to make a comparative analysis between the benefits of insourcing versus outsourcing the mobility-on-demand service. So and that, you know, amounts to a two-part effort, a qualitative analysis and a quantitative analysis. So for the qualitative analysis portion, we conducted peer agency reviews of transit agencies that operated mobility-on-demand services. And you can see them listed on this slide. There were four agencies, Pinellas Suncoast Transit Authority, they operate the PSTA Access, which is a MOD service in Pinellas County, Florida. They currently outsource their service. We also spoke with Links, who runs the Access Links program in the greater Orlando area, and they also outsource their MOD service. And then there's the Central Ohio Transit Authority. They operate the Dakota Plus, which is an in-house MOD service in the greater Columbus area in Ohio. And then the Suburban Mobility Authority for Regional Transportation, who operates the Smart Connect out of Michigan, and they are also an outsourced. So this sample size of peer agencies, I think their percentage reflects the industry and in terms of, you know, those that insource versus outsource, and they're also were chosen for being of similar size and character to Palm Tran. Next slide. So I think it's important to emphasize on these next couple of slides that, you know, the points of information are the responses that were given by the transit agencies that we interviewed and aren't necessarily a conclusion, you know, from Palm Tran. So I just wanted to highlight that point. So first, we looked at the benefits of outsourcing, and some of the responses that we received was, you know, the service is quite flexible to outsource it because it can respond rapidly to changes in demand. One of the things we found was they were able to reduce their deadhead hours, which affects the operations costs because they could select vendors that were in close proximity to the service area. And of course, they mentioned lower costs for operations and maintenance, and the less of a need for additional space in the maintenance facility to house those vehicles. And then speaking to the benefits of insourcing, I guess the theme here is they felt like customer service was the most important factor in deciding to insource the service. They could better, they felt they could better train their operators, particularly as it pertains to ADA, and they felt like they were more branded and loyal to the agency. So those were some of the responses that we received from the agency as to the benefits of insourcing versus outsourcing. Next slide. So we also got into the issue of labor and contractual implications. And, you know, and one of the issues that routinely comes up is dealing with the drivers' unions. And some of the responses that we got from the peer agencies was that, you know, as we all may know, that there is significant labor shortages in the industry right now. And so outsourcing the service has almost become a necessity, and they have not received much, I guess, pushback from these drivers' unions because they understand the need to provide the service in any way they can. So in terms of, you know, the quality of the service, you know, when you contract out the service, you can establish performance metrics that the service provider is required to meet. That way, you know, to create a higher standard, and, you know, there's incentives and also, you know, contractual penalties if they do not meet those standards. And then, you know, in terms of, you know, how much they pay in terms of the drivers, you know, their salaries and benefits. So they built into their selection process, you know, competitiveness of the driver's salaries, you don't always necessarily have to go with the lowest bidder. So you can give more weight to, you know, applicants that provide more competitive salaries. And then, you know, once you contract out the service, you know, there's always a question of who maintains control of the data, especially when you're, you know, you're booking it through an app. And that's also something that can be built into the contract to allow the agency to maintain control over that data. And then when you operate it in-house, you can modify your labor agreements to include a part-time category that'll also give you some flexibility to operate it in-house in terms of the driver hours. Next, we'll move on to the cost-benefit analysis that we conducted. And we looked at two alternatives, one being, you know, contracted by a private vendor versus operated in-house by Palm Tran. And this slide sort of gives you a history of the cost of the service up to this point. In 2019, when the service was started, you know, it was a partial year. So the total expenses are just under $800,000. And then in fiscal year 2020, it evolved into the dial-a-ride service, as was mentioned earlier, and that annual cost was around $1.1 million. And then in 2021, a new contract and updated rates were enacted. So you can see the cost rising there slightly, up to $1.3 million. And then currently, it's just under $1 million as it stands today. So these are just some of the assumptions that we used in our analysis. So first of all, we assume the demand to be equal between both services because whether it's operated in-house or it's outsourced does not necessarily affect the demand for the service. So those assumptions were equal for both. So for the in-house, we relied on the current in-house labor costs, and you can see them identified there, 98, just over $98 per hour, which equates to $7.25 per service mile. And then we also used the existing contracted service rate for the outsourced service, which is $42.20, and then that, which also equates to $3.10 per service mile. And I think it's, you know, and looking at the in-house cost per mile, I think it's important to note that is, that is within the industry standard of between $6 and $10 per mile. And I think that's verified by a recent study Palm Tran conducted to assess their efficiency of their service. And, you know, comparing against a dozen or so agencies, it was found that they were operating efficiently in about the median of the group. So they're falling within that range. And just some of the other assumptions we used, because we did look at the service over time, we included a 6% inflation factor, and then 7% discount rate, and the evaluation period was over 20 years. Just a little more detail on some of the staffing assumptions. I think the, and these, the wage rates are based on the current agreements, salary and benefits. And I think the important distinction here between the insource versus the current, how the current operator provides the service, is that if it was to be brought in-house, there would need to be staff for the maintenance facility, excuse me, facility in the Glades area. They would need to hire technicians and utility workers and maintenance supervisors to staff that. So I think that's some of the important things to note out of this slide and the assumptions. Whereas the, you know, the vendor can use the existing staff that they have for paratransit. This slide just gets under the hood a little bit on how the costs were developed. It's really two parts. There's the annual operating costs and the annual fuel costs. So we, you know, use the annual vehicle miles and apply the cost per mile and then an inflation factor to account for how it changes over time to get the operating cost. And you can see we used also the vehicle miles, applying it to the average miles per gallon for the vehicle type, and adding a fuel efficiency factor because vehicles tend to get more fuel efficient over time to arrive at the amount of fuel that was estimated to be consumed, and then applying that to the average cost per gallon to get the fuel cost. And adding those two together provides you the total vehicle operating cost. And then the next slide, you can see there, the outsourced service is just under $1.4 million annually to operate, whereas the in-house service is just under $3.3 million annually, and I think the important. The metric here is the variance, which is just under $1.9 million annually. So the alternative one has been shown to be less expensive than alternative two to operate. And then the next slide just gives you a sense of how that changes throughout the service life of the vehicles or the service over the 20-year time period. And then, so our conclusions are, you know, based on our analysis, is that the outsourced service for MOD would cost less to operate, as well as, you know, based on our peer reviews, it would allow for greater flexibility with service changes, and then, you know, contracts should stipulate performance standards to maintain that or ensure service quality.
So thank you, Eric, for your analysis of the evaluation that you conducted. And so based on some of these findings, we had an opportunity to sit down. We went to our administrator, Baker, and said, if we bring this in-house, Administrator Baker, this might be an additional $1.8 million. And due to her fine leadership, she said, Todd, Clinton, let's go see if we can sit down with the union, come up with a collaborative solution to bring back to the Board of County Commissioners to kind of reasonably look at this collectively, and that's what we did. And I'm really proud of, this is my favorite slide that's in the presentation, and this is one of the several meetings that we had an opportunity to sit down with the leadership of the local 1577 ATU, to really dive into these numbers a little bit, look at the service, talk a little bit about what that cost analysis was, and what some of the kinds of things that we can do today, and what some of the things that we might be able to do in the future. And one of the things that you would see here today is that Dwight and his leadership team with Joey Acevito, they would be actually here with us at the table, sitting with staff today, on the next slide on some of these recommendations. They worked collaboratively with us. They're at an ATU leadership conference today, but not for that, they would be here with us. And we were really excited about that opportunity to present these particular recommendations alongside of the ATU. So we are seeking board direction on today are the following four items. One, what we would ask the board to direct us to do is to, one, seek and prepare and advertise an RFP with a two-year contractual term to just include some of that language that Eric was talking about, looking at some of the competitive wages and benefits, and how we can proceed forward with the contract during that typical, that particular duration for moving this contract forward again. The second recommendation that we have is to explore the joint use of our Palm Tran's Belglade operational facility. Clinton's going to tell you a little bit more about exactly what that means and how that can help create some efficiencies for us and save some money as well under this proposal.
Yeah, thanks, Todd. And actually, this was one of the union's recommendations, and, you know, when they made it, it was like, that makes sense. And so we sat down and talked about this. Currently, we have a facility, it's our smallest facility that exists in the Glades community. It essentially is an operations and maintenance facility, and our employees maintain our existing fixed route fleet there. We have about 13 buses that serve those three routes. And we have supervisor and like one or two maintenance personnel and a person that cleans the buses. Right now, that facility is underutilized because we only have one shift. At our other two facilities, we have three shifts. So it's underutilized. And currently, the Go Glades provider, MV Transportation, because it's been challenging to find a facility to maintain the Go Glades vehicles and the paratransit fleet, they actually have to, and they do this as efficiently as possible by swapping out the vehicles, but they shuttle the buses from the western community to West Palm Beach to have them preventative maintenance inspections. Minor repairs are done in the Glades area, but Minor repairs are done in the Glades area, but preventive maintenance inspections and detailed maintenance work has actually have to be shuttled back to the eastern part of the county. So we sat down and said, hey, this might work if they can share use of our existing facility through a lease. We did have a conversation with SME, and she said it is possible. Of course, she would want to develop the lease and make she meticulously look at it and make sure it's fine, but it's something that we would like to explore as we move forward.
The third recommendation, in light of Ms. Baker bringing you a balanced budget tonight at your budget hearing, the thought of finding an additional $1.8 million to look at changing the service and doing something different right now didn't seem particularly realistic. However, in the conversations with the union about looking at additional future dedicated funding sources, whether it be federal, state or local, that contingent upon board approval at that time, after this contract moved through the two-year that we presented to you, that we would have the opportunity to, again, sit down with the ATU, analyze the current state of the Go Glades service in the Glades, the current budget situation, and if anything changed, to have the flexibility and liberty to continue those conversations and look at both the transition of the service to in-house and then even possibly to look at whether or not there are other opportunities that exist throughout the county that could benefit from this kind of service as well. And then finally, the fourth recommendation for board direction is our current contract that we have expires at the end of this year on December 31 of 2022. And Palm Trans has been working very closely with Purchasing and Risk that will look to seek approval to extend the current contract for six months to allow some time to prepare, advertise, and then award a two-year contract, as discussed in Directive Number One, to select that vendor. So Mayor--
Todd, if I can just interject, I did have a recent conversation with our new procurement leader, Melody Thelwell. And while we have a recommendation there of six months, which we believe and they believe they can meet to prepare, advertise and award the two-year contract, she said to err on the side of caution, and if we can modify that to 12 months and we can terminate, if we get it done before 12 months, if six months we terminate, seven months we'll terminate that contract if we can get it awarded before that time. So we would like a little wiggle there with, instead of the six months, 12 months to allow time to prepare, advertise and award a two-year contract.
So Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, that is our presentation and happy to answer any questions that you have on any components. And I'm happy to talk more about some of the direction we're looking for. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. We do have several lights that are coming up. I'm sure there's going to be some conversation. I'm going to take the privilege of going first since I'm the transportation guy up here, although I guess Commissioner Marino would say we're co-transportation guys. There's a lot to unpack here. Let's talk a little bit first about, is there any fixed route left out in the Glades? And how is that impacting the ridership on the fixed route? Is that still justified with the number of riders that are using fixed route out there?
Definitely. As Todd mentioned earlier, we merged as a part of RPM in 2018, Route 47 and 48. So it's Route 47 now, which essentially goes from Pahokee, Belglade to South Bay. It's still a viable route, more than 10,000 boardings, I think, a day. And so it's still a viable route. The greatest impact to our fixed route has been COVID. And so that route has experienced a sharp decline in ridership as a result of COVID. What we have seen, and this is a good thing, the Go Glades impact the paratransit numbers more than the fixed route. So we have seen a shift of paratransit riders transitioning to the Go Glades service. Paratransit, the difference between the two, one is door-to-door, and paratransit, where our drivers will actually assist you from your door to the vehicle. Go Glades is curb-to-curb. So we show up at your curb, you're responsible for getting to the vehicle and boarding. There are paratransit users who don't have many dexterity issues and can access that vehicle fine, and they have chosen this service. And so it is at a less, it costs less actually to operate the service than paratransit. So that's a good thing. So it hasn't impacted the fixed route significantly.
You bring up an important point, and that's cost. Can you talk about, what is the cost? You gave us a cost per service mile, $7.25 for in-house, $3.10 for outsourced. How does that compare with paratransit? And how does that compare with fixed route? Now, fixed route, obviously you don't have outsourced. So what would be the number if they were on fixed route on a cost per service mile? And what is the cost for the paratransit?
Well, the cost for paratransit is similar to Go Glades at $42.20 per service hour and $3.10 per service mile. The difference is, when you factor in the passengers per hour, which is the productivity. So on paratransit, they're like 1.4 people per hour. So that's about $35 an hour. And on Go Glades, there are four people per hour. So that's about $12 or close to $11, $12. So that's the difference in costs--
When you say four per hour, are you saying there's four on the vehicle?
Yes, right. Which cuts that service hour by four.
Okay. All right, I'm going to defer to my colleagues. I'll probably come back. Vice Mayor, you were first.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. So, and you actually asked some questions that I wanted to try and understand. So with the paratransit is separate from the Go Glades as a service and separate drivers, separate equipment and everything?
So the equipment is separate. MV Transportation won the bid for the Go Glades service. So MV Transportation has the operating package for paratransit also in the Glades. So there are some efficiencies that they have achieved because they can interchange the drivers because they're at the same rate. And so occasionally, for the most part, the Go Glades are operated by separate drivers, but they will use paratransit drivers to operate the Go Glades service because it's the same provider.
Okay. Do you, is there, do you have a distribution of ridership? I was looking at the size of those Go Glade buses. They seem very large for, I would assume, mostly carrying just a couple of people at a time or three or four people at a time?
Well, it can be four to six people, but the vehicle's size is 12 passengers with two wheelchair positions.
But if they don't do paratransit and paratransit is done by a different vehicle, couldn't we use maybe hybrids, electric cars, something more efficient and smaller and not as costly to operate?
Yes. And we are looking at our composition of vehicles currently. We want to move the needle on using more sedans for paratransit because of that low passenger per hour number, one person, two persons. Where it's challenging sometimes is you can have one person in a wheelchair. And so now you have a sedan that you can't transport the wheelchair, you have to have a separate vehicle. And so that also can be very inefficient. So typically, in transit operations, the cost is in the operator, not the vehicle. So you always want to operate the largest vehicle at any time that you can operate because that vehicle may be carrying, for example, the fixed route may be carrying two or three people as you see the bus riding down the road, but it's going to meet a gang of school kids at the end of the route, and that's 20 people. And now you have to have the capacity on that vehicle to carry those folks.
All right, understood. While we were here, I just did a little math, and if the, in 2021, you had 67,000 riders on Go Glades, and cost was included in your handout. So it was about $19.73 per ride. And with the $2 fare they charged, so that'd be about $17.73, is what it's costing us to do that, which is much better than paratransit, which I think gets closer to $40, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah. So it's a much bigger savings, but still, it's, I mean, in understanding, I mean, we're trying to move people around, there's other costs that are involved in having a car with insurance and everything else. So I understand that. But I think it's just to understand what we're talking about, it is costing us $20, costing taxpayers $20 a ride.
Yes, which is far below the industry standard.
I understand, okay. Is there a similar app for the paratransit service?
No, no, there isn't. Well, there is, there is an app that we're working on, it's called PassWeb. If Ron wants to come speak to our technology that we'll be introducing very soon on paratransit. It's a little different from the VIA app, but there is some technology that's coming.
Correct. We are working with the software vendor to develop an app for our paratransit program and also a cashless fare system. It is in the works right now. I don't really have an ETA on when it's going to be complete, but we are working with them closely to try to get that rolled out as quickly as possible. It is a priority for us.
Okay.
Can you identify yourself with the clerk?
I'm sorry, my apologies. Ron Jones, I am the manager of scheduling and dispatch for Palm Trans Connection.
Thank you.
All right. I think that's, I think it covers my questions. Thank you.
All right, before I get to Commissioner Bernard, to the Vice Mayor's point as far as cost per ride, how much of that is being borne by federal subsidies? And is there a difference between fixed route, paratrans and the Go Glades as far as the outside funding of those subsidies?
So interesting that you asked the question. So the Go Glades, because we've been in this pilot state, as you know, we get federal funding based on ridership and population, right? So the census is incredibly important for us. And so because it's been in a pilot state, and this action will move us out of pilot state and will introduce this service as regular service for us, we have not been able to submit those ridership numbers to the Federal Transit Administration. So it's not, we're not yielding any revenue from the federal government for the Go Glades service. Now, for fixed route and paratransit, based on ridership and population, it's about $20 million of our budget annually.
Do you want to mention the state grant that we had?
Right. And the state grant, we have, I mean, if you go to this slide here, and we'll continue to aggressively pursue state funding. All right, here we go. So the expenses since we've operated is $4.2 million. And you can see the grant funding that our staff have successfully secured for the operations of the service. The first year fully funded, 2020 substantially funded by the state, 2021 substantially funded, but still some local ad valorem needed to support. But now you see the shift where we weren't able to secure as much state funding in 2022, and most of the service was funded by ad valorem. And again, we will aggressively pursue state grants, but that number probably will continue to shift because the state usually will support you in the introduction of service for two to three years, then you have to carry that expense. Now, they've been great partners, the nine vehicles that we're using, they purchase all nine vehicles and the software, which amounts to $1.5 million in capital outlay. So they've been great funding partners for the service.
So you're saying that if we go forward with this and go past the trial, there's going to be additional funding sources now that you'll be able to tap into?
We would get, based on the ridership formula, we should be able to get more federal dollars for submitting our ridership numbers for this service.
Okay. Any of these dollars from ARPA or CARES or that's completely separate from that?
Some of the state-funded money, operating money, did come from CARES Rural, and we were able to apply it to this service, and it came through the state's program.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Bernard, you recognized?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Is it possible for us to get an analysis of the fixed route in the Glades? And, because I'm having a hard time understanding, the fixed route, how we're doing on the fixed route, what is it costing us? And then also the paratransit operation, how's that going? Because it seems to me that they're not, it's not being fully utilized, and they're using their drivers that we are paying for the paratransit to drive on this, on the Go Glades project. And we need to kind of like figure out exactly what's going on with the paratransit also. I'd like to know more about that because I'm not sure, like, I'm looking at Slide 23, it states that for the in-house, it's going to cost us 20 drivers, and they're dedicating 15 drivers. And to me, it seems like those drivers are coming from the paratransit drivers that we're paying, and we're paying also for these drivers because it's not making sense to me. Because I think I just need to know exactly, what are we spending out in the Glades on the fixed route? What are we spending on the paratransit? And then we can make a decision on the Go Glades. Or maybe we should combine the paratransit and the Go Glades into one single RFP so in that way, we're, they're not double dipping.
Commissioner, you make some good points. We have a separate paratransit contract, which is probably one of the largest in the country. We have a separate paratransit contract. We have two providers, MV and First Transit. That contract, for, twice now, we have gone out, as that contract comes to an end, for a new solicitation.
When is it coming to an end?
It expires, this particular contract expires by the end of this month, and we're working with Purchasing to extend. However, we, since, before that time, we have had solicitations on the street for that new contract.
Isn't that the same person who's doing the same service for Go Glades?
No, one of them. One of the--
The two providers who are doing the Go Glades?
No, MV Transportation does paratransit for the Glades community, and they won the contract to do the contract for Go Glades. First Transit does some of the service throughout the county, mostly in the southern part of the county.
I'm just thinking, like, why wouldn't we want to, if they're doing the paratransit for the Glades and then they're doing the Go Glades, why wouldn't we try to do one RFP?
Yes.
So in that way, we get a true, true amount of how much is it costing us? Because it seems like the paratransit is underutilized and they're making money from it. And so now they're using those drivers to drive on the Go Glades, and we're spending money on that. And that's where some of the cost savings are. And then now they want to use our facility to, the fixed route facility, to fix their vehicles.
Commissioner, we're on the same page. The solicitation that we designed as we approached the end of this contract enveloped and incorporated the Go Glades service as a part of that RFP. So the new respondents would be assuming the Go Glades and paratransit.
I don't think you mentioned that before.
No, because the RFP was unsuccessful. And so procurement had-- No, because we, the RFP, uh, was unsuccessful. And so procurement had to throw out all bids, and so we're going back to the table to put another RFP out on the street. Uh, so that is kind of on pause right now, but that was the design of our RFP, which, which, uh, enveloped both of those services into one, uh, package.
Okay. I, okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Commissioner McKinley.
What is the, um, this, the service area? What's the service distance for the Go Glades ride? Isn't it from the curb to the bus stop for the fixed route?
For the Go Glade service? Um, it's, it operates like door-to-door, but it goes from, if you held the bus from your home, it will arrive at your home near the driveway. If you're going to Winn-Dixie, it will drop you off right at the doorstep at Winn-Dixie. The difference between paratransit, because, um, most of our, uh, paratransit users need assistance, the driver actually goes to the door and assists the customer to the vehicle. That's really the only difference, uh, between Go Glades and paratransit.
Okay. And then how far will Go Glades go?
Go Glades will go from Pahokee, uh, to South Bay. Now, you don't, we don't get many trips. The fixed route handles most of those trips. So, uh, based on our analysis, and we didn't show that today, uh, one to three miles, uh, is, is the trip length. And, and most of those trips are occurring in the Bell Glade region.
Okay. If your Go Glades isn't driving passengers outside of the Glades region?
No.
Okay. And your paratransit, how many of those calls are taking a resident outside of the Glades region?
I don't have that information available, but there are some that are going from the western community to the east.
Right. I mean, for all of those that require medical services, most of those medical services aren't available in the Glades region.
Correct.
So if you were to try to combine those, that would be a little difficult if you've got somebody who wants to go to Winn-Dixie versus somebody who needs to get to their doctor's appointment in Wellington.
Exactly. That is correct.
And do you have an issue of, you know, the, the paratransit is funded a lot through the transportation disadvantaged dollars and there's separate record keeping and requirements for funding that service, right?
That is correct, Commissioner.
Okay. And then I would assume that in order, particularly when you bring this under, from the pilot to the, the full-time service, because you will be able to access federal dollars and because of the state dollars that you're currently using for some of these services, that you probably have a requirement that you have to meet to be able to provide seating and services for those with disabilities?
Yes.
So you can never have something that doesn't offer wheelchair accessible?
That is correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure. I mean, I, I get everybody's cost concerns on this one, but I think that's the misunderstanding of rural communities and everything costs more in rural communities. You know, somebody's house might be cheaper out there and the wages might be lower, but providing services from our viewpoint, everything is more expensive. It's more expensive for the sheriff to be out there. Those residents are paying higher garbage collection fees, are paying higher electricity fees, are paying higher water fees. You know, it costs more to develop the land, as I've mentioned, because they have to demuck it. Uh, but that doesn't mean that they're any less deserving of services, but it does mean that we as a board have to fork out more dollars to be able to provide the same services that our residents on the coast have to, are, are able to receive. And that has been the issue that I've advocated for in my eight years on the board, advocating that yes, it's going to cost us more, but they deserve those services. So I am completely in support of the proposal with that slight change from the six month to the 12 month. And I want to thank you. I really want to thank the ATU Union for working, um, so sincerely with you guys on this. And appreciate you bringing this back to the board for reconsideration. And I'm happy to give that staff direction as Eve outlined here. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McKinley. Commissioner Sacks, did you want to be recognized?
Well, I just want to thank, uh, everybody involved in this because I know you've put a lot of time into it. And, um, I'd like to, to say thank you to my colleague, Commissioner McKinley, for looking out for your district so well. And I know that we can make this our little Uber in the Glades with your technology, um, and, and make it so that the folks out there are able to get the best service possible. And certainly, as you said, Commissioner McKinley, consistent with all the services for all the people in Palm Beach County. My question was already, uh, asked and answered.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Marino.
Um, Clinton, earlier you said that with the pilot program, we got some federal dollars to, that purchased vehicles. Who, where are those vehicles being used? Because if, if we're talking about a program where they're supplying their own vehicles, I'm, I'm a little confused as to what vehicles do we have? Who is driving those vehicles? Where are those vehicles going?
Right. So-
You said it was for pilot programs, and usually after two years, sunset, so.
Right. So the vehicles are, uh, owned by the county, all nearly 300 vehicles. The small cutaway vehicles are owned by the county. Um, the state, uh, uh, we, we won a state grant to purchase those, uh, nine Go Glades vehicles at, I think it was $971,000. Um, when the, if that vendor is unsuccessful in the next bid or this RFP, the next vendor comes in and they, uh, uh, will use those vehicles that are owned by the county.
Okay. That's the clarification I was looking for. So they're using our vehicles?
They're using our vehicles.
Okay. So then, um, by having the facility, we already have a facility out there, how, where is the cost savings by them using that facility? Where does it get reflected in the RFP or, um, today?
Yeah. I, I think the key word in our recommendation that we're seeking direction on is explore. Um, and so, you know, we want to further explore this to see if it'll work. Uh, we, we think the efficiency is, again, it's very, it's been very difficult for vendors to find a location to, to maintain vehicles. Um, and so we want to explore the, the, the joint use of that facility. There are vehicles. They will, um, have a probably an operations staff, uh, and maybe a technician, uh, for the, the smaller nine vehicles to, to maintain those vehicles at that facility. Um, we have not looked at the details of this yet. It was a, just a suggestion by, uh, the ATU, and we said, yes, we will explore it.
Thank you. I'd be happy to second the motion.
Well, okay. We're not going to have motions today because this is a workshop, but we'll have a, a consensus. Um, can you explain a little bit about item three? Are we talking about transferring this into other areas of the county? Is that what three is talking about?
No. Item, item three is one where, you know, as we continue to look at opportunities for additional new revenue sources, whether or not the federal government creates new revenue sources that are available for this kind of service, uh, whether we can secure something for the state, or if in the future, at the local level, um, there's dedicated funding towards transit and transportation, um, operations, that we would collectively look at those kinds of funds, uh, to determine whether or not that would be something that could, uh, take on this type of service or even expand, um, these kinds of services in a broader transit and transportation model. So that's really kind of the general discussion from, from that. And, and, you know, as, as TPA and other bodies look at exploring, um, different alternative revenue sources for transit, um, these are the kinds of services as part of that broader transit model that we can incorporate in those discussions.
And my thought is, I mean, we need to be looking at this as a comprehensive plan, not just Palm Tran, but of course, connect in West Palm Beach.
That's right.
Uh, what Bright Line is doing as far as connecting their passengers within five miles of their stations. And I'm wondering, if this is so successful in the Glades, are we going to look at it for the urban core? Are we going to look at it in Boca and Lake Worth and West Palm Beach as an opportunity to move people more efficiently and again, get people out of their cars? Are we in that mindset? Or what is our next step with this, assuming this is successful?
Yeah. I mean, there, there are a couple of things to look at. I mean, number one, we do have municipal partners right now that are looking at, uh, these kinds of opportunities and alternatives in their individual communities and, and have implemented them. Um, and some of them are pretty successful. And I think where you have, you know, core areas where you've got, you know, density that is continuing to be, to, to grow and develop in those areas where circulators and other kinds of means of transportation, I mean, those are the kinds of linkages I think that overall trans, transit model is looking at. Uh, when you're talking about, you know, fixed routes, park and rides, smaller circulators within communities, that's all part of that broader vision that you mentioned. And I think we're all on the same page in kind of looking at that, exploring those options that show what that vision is, whether or not in Palm Beach Gardens, you know, there is the density that warrants that, and in Boca Raton around development on the US-1 corridor, or in Delray Beach and Boynton Beach, in sort of their downtown corridors where they're doing some significant redevelopment, um, or even along, um, some of the areas in Wellington and State Road 7. Um, you know, those are the kinds of things that we're starting to look at, those core pockets where those linkages happen. And, you know, we've obviously shown that this is, I think, pretty successful in the, in the Glades as far as ridership. What's unique about the Glades, obviously, is we can draw that boundary around the Glades and we can kind of keep it compact. The one, the challenge you get when you look at some of these other circulators is, you know, where do you stop it and where does it begin? You know, why is this block and not that block? So those are kind of the real challenges and kind of the tough decisions too, that sometimes need to be made when you're kind of, when you're looking at those specific linkages within the broader transit model. But, I mean, that's the kind of robust conversation, I think, over the next couple of years that we really need to engage in, in kind of layout.
And Todd, you're exactly right. And I, I just want to add that, um, we, we developed as a part of, uh, our, uh, state requirement, uh, the Transit Development Plan. We call it Accelerate 2031. And, um, this micro-transit approach, uh, is, is really sprouting up around the nation as one of the mobility, uh, of choice, uh, in, in transit. And so the fixed route system will still be there, uh, as our staple system, but these micro-transit options is what people want, is what they will use. And so we have evaluated initially in our TDP, some areas, as Todd mentioned, on where this can be applied. And if it's scaled correctly, it could potentially, uh, be the same cost, if not less, than the fixed route. And so we, we are looking at it. It is, uh, an unfunded need. Uh, we do not have funds to expand, uh, mobility on demands to the east, eastern part of the county. Just be clear about that. But, um, that doesn't mean we can't look at it as an option. And if a new funding source, um, uh, is secured, uh, this is something that we would like to, uh, further explore for the eastern part of the county.
And we also, just to add one other piece of this, I mean, we've been having conversations, you know, with the private sector as well, who, you know, developers that are coming into downtown areas or other locations where they're trying to figure out how to move and how to bring their workforce in, their residents in and out of those communities. So, you know, those conversations are starting to accelerate a little bit as well, and working on how we integrate that in the overall model is, is, is pretty key.
Well, you know, to the vice mayor's remark about equipment, I think, um, understanding that you have to be able to accommodate those 20 students, even if the bus has been riding for most of the route with only two or three passengers, I think we still need to analyze what those routes really require as far as equipment and maybe rebalance our requirements, especially during the middle of the day, whether we still need to be putting out those large buses. There's a fuel cost. There's obviously additional costs to run those larger pieces of equipment. And, uh, again, we've also talked about the possibility of a transportation surtax after the infrastructure surtax sunsets. And this would be a perfect example of a situation where we would be able to say to our residents, this is an opportunity for us to give you new expanded service if you would embrace the idea of a continuation of the extra pennies sales tax. But that, I think, will be a conversation for another day. All right. So we have in front of us four questions, and I'm sort of thinking we have a consensus, uh, right now. But, um, what, what exactly would you like to have from us at this point, other than, uh, embracing the idea of continuing with the two-year, uh, contractual term, exploring, as you said, the operational facility being used out in Bell Glade for both the paratran, Go Glades, and for our fixed route? I'm assuming that'll protect our catalytic converters from people who would like to take them home.
Yeah.
New revenue sources, obviously, that you'll be exploring and working on the, uh, contract, uh, looking for a two-year, uh, contract, I think, is what you were hoping for?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. I, I don't see anybody raising any objections. I think you have your marching orders.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Thank you, Ms. Baker. Appreciate it.
Very good.
Mr. Mayor, just to make sure, is it to, not six months, but 12 months? Am I correct?
Correct. On, on the, on the current contract, to extend up to 12 months and with the option of moving that back a little bit if we can get the RFP out sooner. And then the two-year contract would be the, what we'd go out to RFP on, Commissioner.
Very good. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to take a five-minute break between this and the next workshop. We'll be back in five minutes. We'll be back in five minutes. Workshop, I see Commissioner Sacks is coming to join us. And Chief Durin, would you please do the honors of introducing our panelists for the day?
Yes, sir. Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the Board of County Commissioners, Administrator Baker. Joined at the table with me are John Hewlic, who's the Senior Program Director.
Is your microphone on? Maybe just move a little closer, okay.
Okay. Joining me here is Senior Programmer John Hewlic, is Community Services Director Dr. James Green, and Division Director Trina Mahorta. We are presenting for your review the Substance and Mental Disorders Plan Update from 2022. In 2019, the Board of County Commissioners identified behavioral health and substance use disorders as a high strategic priority with a goal to establish a system of care that was person-centric and recovery-oriented with the purpose of improving long-term recovery and outcomes to quality care. What you'll be hearing today is an update provided by the Behavioral Health, Substance Use, and Co-Occurring Disorder Committee, as outlined in their 2022 report. We will identify successes created by the Board of County Commissioners and areas of opportunity. With that, I'll hand it over to John.
Good morning. Can you hit the button?
There we go. It's definitely counterintuitive. Good morning, everybody. Mayor, Commissioners, I am John Hewlic, and it's absolutely a pleasure once again to join you. September is National Recovery Month now, and it's 33rd year. Recovery Month celebrates the gains made by those of us who are in recovery. This year's theme is Recovery is For Everyone. Every person, every family, every community. I am blessed to be a person in long-term recovery for 36 years. And for 34 of these years, I have been given an opportunity to make a difference in lives of individuals and families that I could have never imagined more than 36 years ago. I think it's fitting today to focus on gains and advances in the county's recovery-oriented system of care, other progress, and the future, which is often what plans want us to do, is to set a vision for the future. If I could, though, for a moment of personal privilege, I would, I believe it is also fitting for me to recognize Commissioner Melissa McKinley for standing with those amongst us who are stigmatized and marginalized, as well as for your steadfast advocacy, which has helped to advance this important work. It's been an honor and a challenge, as the county's drugs are. Commissioner McKinley, I hope that I have met and have not exceeded your expectations. It was only a few short years ago that the county was known to be the epicenter over those deaths in Florida, and had the reputation nationally of being the epicenter of fraud and abuse. Headlines read of the county being besieged by pill mills, crushed by the weight of fraudulent actors, which ignited and propelled the opioid epidemic. Now, though, national and state leaders are pointing to Palm Beach County's efforts as work to replicate. Will recall Palm Beach County reached its peak of 626 opioid overdose deaths in 2017, and experience declined from this peak until 2020, until 2020, when at the onset of COVID pandemic, there were 605 opioid deaths, overdose deaths. There were a near 13% decline from 2020 to 2021. The Steering Committee notes in the plan that it, of course, wants to see continued reductions. However, it is the committee's position that one overdose death is one too many. The committee is also well aware that these historic and recent challenges arising from the opioid epidemic and COVID continue to create great systemic stress. It is these stresses that must continue to propel key stakeholders and others to critically analyze the system of care and explore ways to improve long-term recovery outcomes, as well as quality. The Board responded forcefully in 2017 April to this epidemic, to the opioid epidemic, with the adoption of the Opioid Response Plan. It approved the appointment of a county drug czar in 2018, and were critical partners in the opening of the Addiction Stabilization Unit in 2019. 2019 also saw the Board identify, as Chief just suggested, behavioral health, behavioral and substance use disorder as a strategic priority. You also established cross-departmental teams, as well as a community member steering committee. A key strategic objective, again, which Chief has indicated, was to establish a readily accessible, integrated, and coordinated recovery-oriented system of care, and I'm just going to call it ROSC, R-O-S-C, from henceforth, that this care, that this system commits to quality, evidence-based addiction, and mental health services. Its aim, our aim, is to improve long-term recovery outcomes and quality of care. And critical to achieving this aim and this objective was to design and develop a system of care model and the deployment of a scientifically validated survey instrument to measure long-term recovery outcomes. Another important step in the Board's work was the enactment, of course, of the Syringe Access Program and its subsequent launch, and most recently, the Palm Beach County Sheriff's decision to permit its deputies to carry Narcan. There are many important initiatives along the way that have been undertaken. I think it's important, though, to understand that they're not undertaken in isolation. Instead, they have been all viewed through the lens of a system of care model, serving as pieces to the puzzle, if you may, with persons receiving care at the core, empowered and engaged in developing individualized recovery plans aimed at addressing risk and resiliency factors, as well as building their recovery capital. And of course, none of this happens without collaborative partners. And the, those surrounding the puzzle on the screen are many, including the Healthcare District and the Stabilization Unit, Florida DOH and Health Council Southeast Florida, their overdose action grant, and what they're being able to accomplish there through their surveillance data is nothing short of phenomenal. The Hanley Center and its Recovery Leadership Institute, Recovery is Now Campaign, Be Well PBC and its support and facilitation of the Steering Committee, training of mental health providers on the RCI, the Florida Association of Recovery Residences, who are implementing and deploying RCI within certified recovery residences here in Palm Beach County. And of course, not, last but not least on this list is State Attorney David Aronberg, the Sober Herm Task Force, its work in state and legislative leadership, and of course, what they've been able to do around arrests of well more than 100 fraudulent actors. I did want to just highlight, if I could, and we often want to focus, as is important, on service numbers, but we also, beyond the numbers, are really learning things through this work. And I wanted to highlight these, or how we've integrated the work into what we've always done historically. So for example, in our FAA Behavioral Health Funds, in our 2020 NOFO, we were able to orient our services toward the ROSC and the Board's strategic aims, and subsequently contract with our providers incorporating recovery-related outcomes. Part and parcel of this is what we affectionately know as the hub and its facilitating organization, the Palm Beach County Behavioral Health Coalition, which is currently operating the Recovery Community Center in Delray, and are deep into development processes in Lake Worth. SEF Ben and the Center for Family Services, whom we contracted with to launch a neutral care coordination pilot project. And the early assessment of this is really telling. And through a use of neutral assessment, we're finding that 61% of level of care determinations are intensive outpatient or outpatient, and 39% residential. And of course, SEF Ben and Rebel Recovery implemented a federal grant that we received from US DOJ, what we call a COSAP grant, and, which was focused on achieving housing stability and infusing recovery supports, given their predictive value in achieving long-term recovery outcomes. I insisted on a research partner for this project, and that partner was FAU. And our, what we found preliminarily is that the project has been able to isolate certain recovery capital measures, which are predictive to the reduction of recidivism back into the criminal justice system. And of course, working with Rebel and launching the Syringe Access Program. I'll speak to recovery capital in a minute, but wanted to just really provide definition for us, you know, for those leading in the thought around recovery capital over the last 10 or 20 years. And it is the development of a volume of internal and external assets to initiate and sustain recovery from severe alcohol and drug use. It is conceptually linked to natural recovery solution-focused therapy, strength-based case management, recovery management, resiliency and protective factors, and the idea of hardiness, wellness, and global health. Here's the great news, that we are finally able to operationalize and measure these concepts through recovery capital indexing, which is a comprehensive picture of a person's well-being using an online automated survey. It is person-centered, it's scientifically validated to reliably measure a person's wellness, regardless of treatment modality, recovery pathway, or substance of use. We've worked with our vendor Commonly Well over the last number of years. And so the data has been, you know, very, not only informative to us, but directly to our providers, and more importantly, to the persons receiving care throughout Palm Beach County. So to date, we have had over 2,000 survey responses, and we have a 95% completion rate, which is absolutely unheard of in survey responses. So if you've initiated the survey, 95% of them that have completed. And so you can see in the list what our highest indicators are. It's what we call our resiliency factors. And then, of course, what our lowest indicators are, are our risk factors. And they are risk to our overall wellness. And of course, for, you know, for overly, overall well, and, you know, we have built-in capacity, the likelihood of lapsing into active use is much reduced. So in looking at these numbers, how we eyeball these, are from 0 to 50, we call it the build zone. 51 to 70 is the strengthened zone, and 71 plus is a reinforcement zone. A part of the 17 plan, and an Achilles' heel of our work, has been not only data collection, but also data integration. So in other words, everybody's collecting lots of data, and how that data speaks to each other has been problematic. And then frankly, collecting useful data, you know? I mean, we've hinged our system often on successful treatment discharge, which really doesn't tell us much. And I'm proud to say that DOH, Florida DOH, and our vendor Commonly Well are working together to have the surveillance data that they're collecting talk to and make meaning from the data we're collecting from recovery capital indexing. And it's important to understand that we're not collecting data just for the sake of collecting data, that this indexing ties the macro to the micro. So by that, I mean it measures and informs individual services on a one-to-one peer level and the development of an individualized recovery plan. It's different than a treatment plan. Folks present themselves with clinical needs. You're going to address and apply clinical criteria and applications and methodologies. But in terms of eyeballing ourselves toward a longer-term recovery outcome, that's a different type of approach. And so we're really focused on those longer-term aims, while also still addressing those most acute needs when someone might be initially entering care. It informs the programs at the organizational level, which is important. So, you know, there's a nimbleness to it. So as data is collected at an organizational level, they can be, to be, begin to modify, you know, some of their work. And lastly, of course, from us, you know, I'm not really a data geek, but I know how to take data, interpret it, and hopefully use it as a data-informed measure, is, you know, taking that data and helping it to inform our work moving forward. All of this, all of this work has helped to inform the master plan update that we're reviewing today. And it's been reviewed by the Steering Committee, which was, has been comprised of 22 current and former members who possessed a wealth of lived and learned experience. It's also comprised of six subcommittees, which were open to every community member. Any community member that wanted to participate could. And they provide it regularly, bi-monthly throughout the work, and continue to provide feedback to the committee's work. So today with us this morning are some members of the committee, other community members, and of course, some of these are parents of loss. They're affected family members, much like myself. And to all of them, I wanted to just express my deep gratitude and heartfelt thank you for your perseverance, commitment. for your perseverance, commitment and passion. We've not only been busy contracting, but, you know, again, reviewing a number of bodies of work, inclusive of the 2017 Response Plan, the triennial County Behavioral Health Needs Assessment, the committee reviewed and analyzed a number of community forums. Of course, I've already spoke to facilitated an ongoing subcommittee process and reviewed lots of other research and survey reports. And what we found, the committee and the plan found, were common, there were just common findings amongst these bodies of work, common findings were, look, we know this, the reality of substance use disorder, of mental, they were just complex root causes. And there's just this, not this singular magic bullet that's going to make an individual well. So we have to look at things very personalized and individualized. You know, what was referred to in the 17 plan as a glaring absence of a coordinated response and spheres of siloed interest. Those concepts aren't new, not just this space, they're kind of new, not new to government either. But we continue to work at that. The need for systems collaboration, particularly, as I've already suggested, as it relates to data and outcomes, and of course, the need to understand correcurrence, as well as the focus on social determinants of health. And it's one of the things I really value too about RCI, it really begins to orient us towards social determinants of health as a predictive factor with respect to achieving long-term recovery outcomes. Also, we're found common recommendations, the need for a coordinated response through the designation of a primary entity that would be responsible for integrating some of these efforts, the need for the development of a central assessment and care coordination system for the community, the development of a true RSC environment, and the continued expansion of an enhancement of peer support of drop-in and recovery community centers and referral linkage to a wrong no-doer approach. To educate the community and the committee members, we also built what we called white papers, a little bit more deeper dive into conceptually what our work was about. So there were three pieces of work that were produced by the department. The first was a moving from a treatment-centric to a person-centered RSC, neutral care coordination, and actually going about the business of executing a RSC. And last but not least, was making the recovery capital integral to system of care efforts. Pivoting to the plan itself, which was approved unanimously by committee members in March of this year, the executive summary highlights the historical basis and reasons underlying the 17 opioid response plan. It provides high-level data on overdoses, deaths and recovery capital index trends, emphasizes the critical need to develop and implement a person-centered RSC, and highlights key issues and strategies from the subcommittees overall, and the top two or three strategies from each of the six subcommittees. So you can imagine, over the number of years of work, a lot of recommendations were made, which are found in what I call the guts of the report. And the committee went about the business of trying to prioritize that and glean from that some higher-level recommendations and place those into the executive summary, which clearly lays the groundwork for the development of a true centered RSC. Let's make sure my mouth is keeping up with the slides. The plan's priority recommendations include, did include the designation of a lead entity in the county, the continued advancement of a person-centered RSC policies and legislation, and the implementation of the county's system of care model. It also placed importance on identifying sustainable resources. And here we say essential services, and this might not be meaningful to most, but sometimes it's in the nuance, and I just want to spend a moment on this if I could. The 17 plan referred to ancillary services, as if we give these really important, critical predictors to long-term recovery outcome a secondary thought. It was the will of this body, the committee, not this, the committee members, that we need to place, we would not call these services ancillary, but essential services to achieving long-term recovery outcome. It might, very significant, seemingly minor, but significant change in mindset. The second section lays out, and anybody that's done strategic planning knows, mission, vision, valuing work can be really labor-intensive and a little mind-splitting, but eventually, the committee members did come to consensus, which you see reflected on Section 2 in this slide. Pivoting to the third section of the plan, was referred to entitled foundational elements. And those elements included infrastructure needed for success, which included primarily the development of that person-centered RSC, with fluid movement across types and levels of care, with the underpinnings within peer support, neutral care coordination, evaluation and data, and contractual provisions that emphasize not only timely and accurate data, but also data that's reporting on outcomes, measures for purposes of accountability. What I just referred to is the guts of the report are really in Section 3. This was the ongoing work of our subcommittees, and it was a facilitated process, and that process really aimed toward assessment of what issues were critical, why we needed to be concerned, strategies to address those concerns, and as critically to that, what were the mechanisms for accountability. Just a little time on recovery. We've had definitions of it, as I've suggested, it's really important now we've been able to operationalize that and measure it through our recovery capital index. But SAMPA, and this is a longstanding definition, recovery is a process of change through which individuals improve their health and wellness, live a self-directed life, and strive to reach their full potential. And SAMPA lays out four dimensions of health, home, purpose and community. SAMPA also lays out guiding principles which you see on this slide, hope, person-driven, many pathways, holistic, peer support, relational, culturally sensitive, addresses trauma, strengths, responsibility and respect. So much of my time has been spent on achieving, obviously, the board's strategic objective. And the system of care model was created as a result of the board's vision. And at its heart is a true RSC environment that is a coordinated network of community-based services and supports, person-centered, and provides self-directed approaches. One of the leaders of this movement for the number and number of years is William White. And White aptly states that the system in RSC is not a treatment agency, but a macro-level organization of a community, a state or a nation. At the top of the model of the neutral care coordination, and this was recommended in the behavioral health, triennial Behavioral Health Needs Assessment as well, is the overlay to the system of care and critical to delivering assessment, referral and coordination of services oriented toward individualized service plans which are considerate of individual choice. Similar efforts in other jurisdictions have proven to reduce lapse into deep-end services, it improves quality of care and long-term recovery outcomes, and produces cost savings which can be reinvested into social determinants of health. And I did mention earlier, but I want to just repeat, that the preliminary findings of our neutral care coordination project are already mirroring some of these successes and results. The underpinnings of the system really rest on the non-clinical recovery and peer supports and measuring and monitoring of recovery wellness through recovery capital indexing. And the underpinnings, which are the most visible part of, I think, the systems model, are the network of recovery community organizations, centers that the board has approved, both now in Delray and Development and Lake Worth. And John Kelly of Harvard Recovery Research Institute describes the centers as recovery hubs, facilitating one-stop shopping in the accrual of recovery capital. And these activities are, critical are their peer-led, right? And they do provide peer support services and other recovery-related services like trainings around social, educational, recreational opportunities. But we just don't deploy these for the sake of deploying them. You know, there's evidence produced out of Harvard that demonstrates clearly that these interventions help vulnerable individuals beginning their recovery with few resources and low capital, offers values to many others in early years of recovery stabilization and beyond, and definitely provide a unique function in helping participants build recovery capital, increase quality of life and esteem, and most importantly, is decrease psychological distress. And this is all in the evidence. And lastly, just want to say, I know I've covered a lot of ground, I don't know I did it in 10 minutes, but I tried. And if I could, just borrow the words from State Attorney Dave Aronberg, "We have made substantial progress in the ongoing efforts to save lives from this unprecedented epidemic, and we realize that there is more work to do." Indeed, there is more work to do, but we've had a good start, and we have a vision for the future to strive for. And I just want to, again, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much for that presentation. And certainly, I think it's something we need to understand, especially the impact that the pandemic had on all this and really creating more obstacles to recovery. And I think that obviously, we're coming back out of that, but certainly, we need to recognize the kind of pressure that was placed on people during that period of time. Commissioner McKinley, you're recognized.
Couple questions first. You're an acronym-heavy kind of guy. What does ORF stand for?
Opioid Response Fund. Yeah, that's the funds that you approved along with the adoption of the 17 plan and the approval of the drug czar's position.
Okay. And Ms. Baker, have we added to that fund the ARBIT dollars? Does your member in the ARBIT dollars, we set aside $10 million for mental health and substance use?
If the board gave us that direction, I don't remember it right off the top of my head, but yes, staff is telling me we did add it to it.
And then Jonathan and James in chief, on the summary here, you've got some action steps it looks like you'd like us to take. In your mind, who would you see as being a lead entity? Do you have designated a lead entity here?
Well, you know, I was a former drug czar in New Jersey, I'm certainly familiar with those. I think part of my experience here is there's been responsibility infused in a position, yet not responsibility infused more broadly in terms of functionality. You know, obviously, I'm getting a little older, you know, and succession planning is very important to me. So I would hope, you know, obviously, I think the county has demonstrated, not just myself, incredible leadership. We've accomplished a lot. So that designation of a lead entity, it's my belief that the county and its elected officials should be able to weigh in, not direct, but at least weigh in on a very critical matter to its residents.
Is there a specific staff direction you'd like us to give on that one?
I think, you know, it's important as a system of care to have that level of oversight. And right now, our system, we're continuing to shift and to bring in partners like the Healthcare District, we're working closely with Southeast Florida. And so I think over the coming months, that designation will be clearer in terms of what that might look like. But we, you know, in terms of a body of work and really operating as a system, the Steering Committee definitely sees a benefit in having kind of a lead entity there.
Okay. And then my last comments were, you don't realize how much you've done until you see it all laid out on the slide there. This is an incredible team effort with a wonderfully supportive Board of County Commissioners and a great staff, and a very tenacious, committed group of community volunteers and leaders and affected families who helped do all of this, and will continue to help do all of this. And I'll save my comments for 57 days from now, but I just want to thank you. And I've heard a little bit of grief today about this, me taking up a little bit of time pushing priorities from my district, and this was initially my priority, but this became the board's priority. And everybody has jumped on board, and I would imagine every one of us has been personally affected by this issue. And so I just hope that it remains a priority of this board, and that you continue to do the good work. And I would also ask, I'm on a group text of moms, and one of the mothers today got a code yellow from her school out in Wellington, and we're seeing a tremendous impact on our school-aged kids and our college-age kids still. And I don't know that the same system probably needs to be tweaked a little bit to meet the needs of the younger population, but if we could put a little emphasis in working with the school district on how to partner some of our efforts with their efforts, I know that at least Erica Whitfield would probably be a really great partner on that. I mean, her background comes from wellness, but I would ask that we work closely with the school board on how we can meet the needs. And I know our mayor, when I first met with him when he was running for office, mental health was going to be and continues to be one of his priorities. So I hope you keep that good work going forward, Mr. Mayor.
And I'm sure your successor will have big shoes to fill. Mr. Green, you know, we can't look at these items in isolation, as Commissioner McKinley said, and I'm worried, especially when we have to close the portal for people seeking assistance for other areas of economic stress, that this is not going to bleed into this area. Can you give us a little update on the status of the assistance that the county is being able to offer, and when the portal will be able to be reopened for assistance?
Yes, and, you know, we recognize the huge importance of social determinants like housing assistance and others in the recovery of many of our residents. Right now, we're scheduled to reopen on October 3. That will give us the opportunity to really process and to get our heads above water with the number of applications that are coming in. We do continue to see a high influx of applications. We have seen an increase since the state closed their portal back in June. And so we're doing our best to get through those applications to minimize the number of people we're calling, just to get status updates, we have to be able to push them through. And so October 3, I believe, is the date that we'll reopen. And until then, we'll work with our system partners to make sure that people who are in our need of assistance, that they can get it. And we'll also work with residents to make sure that they are prepared, they have the documents and the things that are necessary in order to get their applications processed quickly and efficiently between now and then. You want to?
So if someone's in crisis, they can still reach out if there's an issue?
Yes, we're still working with our nonprofit partners and others, so they can call 211. 211 has a list of nonprofit partners, they continue to update that list to make sure that there is funding available, so that, you know, they're not going in circles. And so they can do that. Or they can call our contact center, and we'll help navigate them as well.
And we have also applied for additional $20 million from Treasury to meet the needs, because currently we are very low on funds, we have less than $16 million left in this program. So we are hoping that Treasury award us additional dollars.
Yeah, so we're predicting that probably by the end of December or January, that those stimulus dollars will be depleted. And so, you know, we're just pushing for it as best we can.
Very good. Very good. Commissioner, I mean Administrator, you want to give me additional information on that?
I simply wanted to share that our staff has been working diligently. They're recognized throughout, really, the country, because we've been able to sweep dollars away from other counties that have not expended their dollars. So we've received some, and we're going after $20 million more. So it is disheartening sometimes when we have to close the portal, but we're ensuring that we are following all of the rules, and we're being able to report properly, so they don't come in and claw dollars back from us. But we're spending it so fast that we're now able to be recipients of dollars that other counties have not expended for this purpose. So thank you, staff, for your hard work.
Are we, County Administrator, what are we doing to try and stem the flow of aid, to assist people to get back on their feet? I mean, this money is, at some point, is going to run out.
That is something that we have been discussing, because we currently do not have a maximum amount that we will allocate to one family. However, we do spread it out, they do have to come in on a periodic basis to show us that their financial situation has not changed. We believe that, especially now that we've got the 17, we're down to 17 million, we may or may not get the 20, hopefully we will, but I believe we need to put a cap on what a family ultimately can, may receive within a 12-month period of time. Because no one should just be waiting on us to pay the rent. We really need to be able to spread it out and help those desperately in need. So that is something that we're toying around with, we're doing our research to see what other counties are doing. We know that our rents are extremely high here in Palm Beach County, and so therefore, we need to look at the two comparisons to ensure that if we set a limit, that it's reasonable to set and allow people to get on their feet.
Are we being proactive in trying to offer counseling or other services like we would do if they had shown up at the Lewis Center? And so that, again, we're helping them get back on their feet rather than just continue to help them with their expenses?
That is correct. We want people back to work. Our businesses here in Palm Beach County need workers. And so part of it is, again, wrapping social services around those individuals coming in, seeking assistance, and in moving forward. So yes, we are.
And we have designated two housing counseling agencies. So anybody who has received more than $10,000 since scares, we have been referring to them to get the budget assistance, you know, the counseling, how to manage their budget. And then also, we have employment counselors working with anybody who comes in as unemployed, to get them job training, certification, soft skills, and then, you know, get them with career source to place them in positions.
Yeah, we certainly recognize that the North Star is for families to become financially independent. So as we engage in this work, we look at it from two different lens, from those individuals who don't have the ability to work, and those who do. For those who don't have the ability to work, we want to make sure that they have the emergency supports that they need, so that, you know, one incident won't send them on a downward spiral financially. If they do have the ability to work, then our aim should be economic mobility. It should be to create conditions that allow them to get the supports they need, and to make sure that they have the social and human capital that they need, and they can begin to earn more. And so working with our system partners to enhance those opportunities is a key focus, and we're going to be talking about that quite a bit next week at the Economic Mobility Summit.
Very good. All right, well, I don't see any more lights on, so I think that you have satisfied us with this update. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Unless any of my colleagues have anything they want to bring up at this point, I'm going to say we are adjourned for the day. Thank you. Oh, for the moment. We'll be back at 5:05 to discuss something called the budget. All right, we're adjourned.